I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Monday, April 9th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience also recording. Seeing none, could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have is public comment, and we have Alan Rafferty, who wants to speak on guns. Mr. Rafferty?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for this opportunity. First of all, I'd like to welcome back, I understand, some of the selectmen and the town manager were on a cruise, so welcome back to the town. I want to thank you for this opportunity to get something off my chest, something that's been bothering me for quite a while. As we all know, on February 14th, Valentine's Day, there was a major shooting at the Marjory Stonemans Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Several people, several students were killed. Much to the kids' credit, they have risen up. They've risen up and decided to do something about guns. To quote an old song, "Someday our sons and daughters will rise up and fight while we sit still." I give them a lot of credit for trying to accomplish something. Recently, I was looking online what it would take, whether I needed a firearm identification card for my wife so that she could have some kind of personal protection. And interestingly enough, there was some gun courses listed. There was a link at the Auburn Police Department site that linked to a state site, and it listed all the certified gun courses that were available to people who decided if they wanted to get a weapon, they would have to take a course and train. One thing that really bothered me is one of the certified courses was being offered by an organization called the Liberal Gun Club. The Liberal Gun Club. And I decided to check out their website to see if, in fact, these were so-called liberals who were promoting gun ownership. Well, after listening to a couple of their podcasts where they were denouncing the left and all the arguments they were using to try and have better gun control, it was obviously that the title of their organization is a joke being cast away of people who consider themselves liberals. So tonight, I would request that the Board of Selectmen consider asking the police department to take down that link and list the courses separately, but exclude this organization, the Liberal Gun Club, which I think is a slight for people who consider themselves of the liberal or progressive persuasion. And I know an election's coming, and you might not want to take this stand, but I think you should side with these kids and take action and not sit still tonight. In addition, my understanding is our state representative, Michael Moore, is proposing legislation to bring back the sale of silences for guns. Silences, so that you can shoot quietly. I can't believe that. And so I'd like to see if the selectmen would like to take a stand on that tonight. And I know that, Madam Chairwoman, Goodrich, that you work for Mr. Michael Moore, so I understand why you might not want to take a stand against your boss, but I can't believe that he's proposing silences. And this is a very important issue for the children, the schoolchildren across the country. Let's take a stand tonight and do what we can in our own little way to see if we can rein in the mass slaughter that is taking place in our school systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty.
Wayne Page, 900 Common Road. After hearing what I just said, was just said, I'd like to make a stand saying that I am for the Second Amendment, but I am for more gun control. And I would like to say Massachusetts has one of the most strictest gun controls there is. I have gone through the safety course through the Auburn Police Department and found it very informing. I learned a lot more about guns and a lot more about handling them than I would ever done on my own. And, like I said, I am for the Second Amendment. I think everybody should have one, but there has to be more restrictions on the guns themselves. Thank you.
So before we move on, I'll just state for the record that, and I'm sure Mr. Rafferty is aware of the open meeting law requirements, it's not appropriate to take a position on an item that was not properly posted on the agenda. We could potentially put it on a future agenda, even the next meeting, but we cannot take a vote or a position on something that the public was not given notice that we would be taking a position on. So, moving on, we have communications from the Blackstone River Watershed Association, and I'll just read this letter. Dear Board of Selectmen, the Blackstone River Watershed Association is sponsoring their annual river cleanup on April 14th in the following towns: Auburn, Millbury, Grafton, Upton, Sutton, Northbridge, Uxbridge, Douglas, Hope Dale, Mendon, Millville, and Blackstone. I've attached the press release with all the details for your review. We will be in contact with the Town DPW to arrange trash bag pickup at the event. Please let us know if you have any questions or concerns, or if you would like to participate. And on the flyer, there is some information on how you can participate. You can go to www.thebrwa.org, or you can call (508) 278-5200. Again, this is on Saturday, April 14th, 2018, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. If you're interested in volunteering on this Earth Day cleanup, again, it's www.thebrwa.org, or you can call (508) 278-5200. Moving on to Board of Selectmen general items, we have a common victory license for Castro Restaurant LLC, doing business as Golden Pizza 20 Auburn Street. In your packet, you have the enclosed application and documents and recommendations from the DCG. Is the applicant here?
Yeah, ma'am.
If you could please come up and join us. You can come sit up here, we can probably hear you better from over here. And it's Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could spell your name for the record and just tell us a little bit about why you're here tonight.
First name or?
Both, please.
My first name is Evaldo, E-V-A-L-D-O. My last name is Castro, and I'm buying Golden Pizza on 20 Auburn Street. Right now, I'm just going to keep it the way it is, the same menu, the same hours, and later I want to maybe change the name. Not now, so.
But you're leaving it as Golden Pizza right now?
Yeah, I'm going to leave it as Golden Pizza right now.
Okay. And you met with the DCG?
I did, yeah.
The members have any questions or comments?
Nothing here.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions recommended by the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. Good luck on your new business.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Next, we have Mr. Butler here for his annual visit. We have a one-day beer and wine license for St. Joseph's Church nicer Columbus fundraiser at 68 Central Street on May 5th, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Good evening, Mr. Butler. If you'd like to join us and tell us a little bit about why you're here tonight, wherever you're more comfortable.
Has he been here before?
I've been here a few times in a few different areas. Not just this one, this is only the 12th time for this one. And I got no Boy Scout, nothing to do with them anymore, so, thank God. But we're doing our 12th annual fundraiser for the Night at the Races. In the past 11 years, we've raised $80,000, and out of the $80,000, half go to scholarships for graduating seniors, and the other half goes to charities, many different charities, obviously. Anybody who requests money, and we have money, we give it. And basically, I'm here to try to get a one-day liquor license to be just beer and wine for May 5th, from 5:00 to 10:00.
Thank you. And I see you provided us with the same layout, so the beer and wine will be served from that kitchen window?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
And you have two TIP certified persons?
Correct.
Serving that evening?
Yeah, same two as always.
Okay. And he does have the crowd manager training in his packet. And did you meet with DCG?
Yes.
Or somebody in the group?
Yep.
Okay. Yep, I've got it here. So, the members have any questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we order to approve the license provided all the applicable requirements of the state and town and its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it, and failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions recommended by the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the fee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thanks, have a great day.
Thank you guys very much, have a great night.
Next, we have the review and potential vote on the Sped Stabilization Fund policies. Dr. Brunel, if you'd like to come up and join us, please. Do have the policy in front of us, Dr. Brunel, but if you could give us a little background, I know we have two representatives on this board, but just give us a little background as to how we got to where we are tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you, members of the board, Julie and Ed and Sharon for having me this evening. So, this was actually passed recently by the legislature under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13E. And what the legislature took up was really trying to address a problem that many districts are having, that special ed costs, particularly those for out-of-district students, are one of the most volatile areas of our budget. Because if a student is to move into town with an IEP, an Individual Education Plan, that's a legally binding document, and we need to provide those specialized services. Out-of-district tuitions can range anywhere from a low, at our collaborative, about $37,000, to, we've had in the past, we don't have currently, placement of nearly a quarter million dollars per child. So, with this law came forward, and through discussions with Town Manager Jacobson and CFO Kazanovich, and if you remember, last year, we came to the Board of Selectmen in Finance, and through their support, we were added about $350,000 to our budget, fairly late in the process, but certainly before town meeting. And that was because we had a number of unanticipated potential costs that were going to come through this line. So when the legislature made this as an opportunity, we in the school, speaking on behalf of the school committee, really felt that this was a great idea to do. So with the agreement of Town Manager and CFO, we assembled a team, two members of the select board, so thank you to Mr. Holstrom and Mr. Carpenter, who joined us from Finance. We had Mrs. Holstrom and Mr. Kennedy, and from the school committee, we had Mr. Scoville and Mrs. Harrington. And we had a number of different meetings, we had some healthy dialogue that went around. And what you have before you is the ultimate draft policy. So as noted in this policy, the intention of this, and this is very specific and in keeping with the law, is to address any unanticipated and unbudgeted special education costs. So in this fund, we can have a maximum of 2% of the annual net school spending, which would be about $450,000 roughly. So what we're looking for this evening is your support in this. If you remember, it went before town meeting, it was supported so long as the policy was created jointly by the three boards. So our goal as a school committee will be to add into there any excess funds, should there be any, so that this is really a backstop or a fund in case some unanticipated unbudgeted students come forward. So it is my sincere hope that you pass it, and I think it would be great, not only for the school district, but quite honestly, for the town as well, to really try and take out some of that volatility that is just inherent in special education.
Mr. Holstrom, having served on that subcommittee, do you want to add anything?
No, she pretty well covered it, but I will say that there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of questions, and there was some pretty good debate on how it was going to be funded, how it was going to work, and it didn't come lightly. It was a lot of questions asked, a lot of questions answered, and so there was a lot of research done over the course of the time, and it's been a year?
Earlier this year, we started, yes, for the school year, yes.
So within the past year, there's been a lot of research and a lot of questions, and the school department has come back with a lot of answers for us through the business administration, so it's been well looked at, and it's time for us to go forward to help out the town, and I think it will definitely help out the budget, both the schools and on the town side, I think it will help us out all the way through. There's been input from both sides.
So it's my recollection that you needed an affirmative vote from all three boards to move forward with this. The school committee has taken their vote, has the finance committee taken their position?
Madam Chair, it's going to the finance committee this Wednesday evening.
Okay. And Mr. Kazanovich or Ms. Jacobson, do you have any comments on this before the board takes a position?
I think Superintendent covered very thoroughly the process and the discussions we had. One element that I do want to draw attention to, that is part of this policy, which really addresses the volatility going forward, is we ask through this policy that the out-of-district appropriation be level funded from year to year. So if the costs go down, we thought by level funding, it provides an additional backstop for any outside placements that may not be known, that happened to us this fiscal year that required an additional $350,000. But additionally, it provides a potential funding mechanism for the Sped Reserve Account if that money is not utilized. So it gets us to the 2% a lot quicker if that money is not used. I think once we get to the 2%, then we'll have an opportunity maybe to revisit the policy and amend it to allow for something different that's currently in place right now.
Are there questions or comments? Does someone want to make a motion?
I would like to make the motion that we go approve the Special Education Stabilization Fund as discussed here tonight.
And presented? As discussed and presented?
As presented. I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. And if you could just stay there for one minute?
Sure.
Our next item is the vote on the recommendations for the May 1st, 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. We have many department heads here, and we also have Dr. Brunel, who has a couple of articles. So if you could get out your town meeting warrants, I would entertain a motion to move up Articles 13, 14, 15 while Dr. Brunel is already at the table.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, Dr. Brunel, I'm not sure if you have a copy of your?
We do.
Okay. So 13, "To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $185,000 from Medicaid receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2019 to fund supplies in medical, therapeutic, and educational services for significantly disabled special needs students, as well as tuition and transportation to and from outside placement or within the district for students, for special needs students, or act on anything relative thereto." And, Dr. Brunel, I believe this is a standard article, but if you could just speak to this?
It is. This is the one that, for Medicaid receipts that come in through the general funds, and then we need to seek them as reimbursement. I believe last year, I don't have my number in front of me, I think the town received a little over $200,000 for this, so this is our best estimate on the conservative side. It is in support of students with special education needs.
Okay. Do any members have any questions? So our options tonight are to recommend approval, not recommend approval, defer to the petition, or vote no position at this time, and if we so chose to take a no position at this time, we could meet before town meeting to take a position. Is there a motion?
A motion to recommend approval.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those? Mr. Holstrom?
One question. You said the $185,000, you're being conservative on it. Will you have any other numbers before town meeting?
So this is?
This number is pretty much set for town meeting.
This number is set for town meeting, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Is there? We had a motion and a second. All those, I'm sorry, I'm going to lose my voice tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Moving on to Article 14, "To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $8,676.72, which is the interest earned by the Auburn High School Gymnasium Health and Recreational Trust Fund to offset school department costs at Auburn High School in support of community health and recreational facilities at Auburn High School Gymnasium and related facilities and equipment." Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is also a standard article that comes through each year. The monies from the interest from this fund are used to pay for site managers up at the high school for the immense amount of community activity that takes place.
Are there any questions on this? Ms. Lola Lowery.
Through the chair, I was just wondering what kind of activities this money goes to fund.
So it could range from Auburn youth basketball, perhaps, the Auburn Rec and Culture Programs that are offered on a regular basis. It's really for any community use in addition to these funds. It was, at one time, when I was first here 10 years ago, it was substantially more money that came, but obviously, interest rates are low. So the school department budget actually is at, I think, $15,000 to supplement this for site managers at the high school, and we've also added them at the middle school. You're welcome.
Go ahead, Ms. Lola.
Make a comment that, you know, there are a lot of functions that go on at the high school, and being that you have to have, you know, really, the doors open, and there's, you know, there's bathrooms a little ways down the hall, and there's the gym function, it is very, very important to have a monitor there, and they do have a monitor there. Every time I've gone in, they do a great job, so I support it 100%, and I'll make a motion to recommend approval, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. And I think that is, do you have one more? Yes, you do. 15. "To see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article 4 of the May 2016 Town Meeting, Package Jog Building Rehab Account 302017-581739 as follows, authorize the amount of $127,685 to be used for the purpose of design and construction of an additional bathroom as required at Package Jog Elementary School." Dr. Brunel.
So this is actually to repurpose previously approved CIP funds, and we had, with your approval a couple of years ago, changed this money to go into the Package Jog Rehab, and that was actually for the replacement of the roof. Because we had partnered MSBA, and they reimbursed a little over 54%, these monies are available. We do have in the CIP to install an additional bathroom in the vicinity of the cafeteria and modular area. We now have a couple of preschool classrooms up there, and they're expanding the space, so an additional bathroom is required.
Any questions? Mr. Raphael?
And maybe, the bathroom, is it going to be, is it both? Is it two bathrooms? Is it a unisex bathroom? What is it going to be? And then, is it all handicapped?
So it's, through the chair, it's in the design phase right now. Our intention is to have two bathrooms available. It would definitely be handicap accessible, it would meet all current codes, but it's going to come in depending on class. But handicap accessibility is certainly a given, but our goal is to have two stalls.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you so much for coming in, Dr. Brunel.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
So we'll go back to the start of the agenda. Article 1 is to hear reports, we don't take a position on that. Article 2, "To see if town meeting will vote to fix the salary and compensation of elected town officials." Ms. Jacobson, is there something on this? Is there an expectation to change the salaries? Is there an increase or anything?
I believe there's an increase, requested increase, of 5% on the town clerk's salary.
So under this article, there's a request for a 5% increase on the town clerk's salary. Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. Article 4, "To determine what sums of money the town meeting will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or otherwise provide for and appropriate to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide for a reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning 2001, ending June 30th, 2019." Mr. Kazanovich.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a general fund operating budget, so this addresses all the department requests that is currently before the Finance Committee. Finance Committee is planning on wrapping up their budget hearings on Wednesday, and all of this budgetary information has been provided to you in advance when we submitted the budget to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to recommend in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article 4, "Not going to read the whole thing, but it is to see if the town meeting will vote to approve a capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2019 to determine what sums of money will be raised by taxation and appropriate transfer from available funds acquired by lease purchases, authorized to be borrowed, or otherwise provided for." Ms. Kazanovich.
Madam Chair, a brief update on Article 4. This is requesting an appropriation made up of several funding sources, an amount of 1.982 million. This is the five-year capital plan. The Article 4 is asking for a borrowing to meet this recommendation of 537,000. The remaining balance of this appropriation would be covered through $991,984 of tax levy appropriation, $210,000 from SOAR retained earnings, $25,000 from CIP trust, $18,051 from Cable Access retained earnings, which is now an enterprise fund, $90,000 from a receipt reserved for appropriation called bond premiums on sale of bonds, $110,000 recommended from stabilization, and once again, the bond proceeds amount of $537,000.
Are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Moving on, I just want to confirm this with town administration and other CFO. Articles 5 through 19, I believe, I mean, I'm sorry, Articles 5 through 11 are standard articles?
That is correct.
All standard articles? So Article, so I'll read portions of them. Article 5 through 11 are standard articles on the May Town Meeting warrant. Article 5 is "To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue to be received during the fiscal year beginning 2001 and ending June 30th, Are there any questions?
You want to take these, 5 through 11? You want to take them all at once?
Do you want a moment to read through them? And, okay.
I'm good with them, so.
Okay. So is there a motion to recommend Articles 5 through 11?
Make a motion to recommend approval on Articles 5 through Article 11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you for that. Moving on, Article 12, "To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $500,000 to the other post-employment benefit trust fund affectionately known as OPEB." Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, this is in keeping with our financial policies that were adopted in 2012, related to setting aside, making appropriations into the OPEB trust fund on an annual basis, and this has always been a standalone article on the annual town meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. We've taken care of Articles 13, 14, and 15. We have Article 16 coming up. We have Article 16 coming up, 17 coming up, and then on deck is the DPW and Super Sewer Superintendent. So, Article 16, to see if the town meeting will vote to raise and appropriate $65,200 from overlay surplus for the purpose of funding costs associated with the assessors fiscal year 2020 recertification of real and personal property values. Is the assessor here, or are you taking care of that?
I'll take this one, Madam Chair. This is a recertification process that has been brought before town meeting every three years. We are still on, this is the last of the three-year cycle, and then it now reverts to a five-year cycle. And every three years, we bring a article to town meeting to fund for that recertification of values of real personal property, as done in the assessor's office. This basically updates our software in addition to the values, which is required periodically. This is not out of the norm. I think the last one that came before town meeting was in the vicinity of $55,000.
Thank you.
This is gonna be funded through overlay surplus, which has recently been certified through a request I made through the assessor's office, so this money will be in place for this town meeting vote.
Great, thank you. Mr. Holstrom.
Through the chair. You said that this is a three-year cycle, and now it's gonna go to a five-year cycle? Can you explain that?
So the Department of Revenue requires certification of values on a three-year basis. Recently, about a year ago, maybe, they changed that requirement from three to five years. So, on our recertification, we were in the pipeline for FY '20. We were given consideration, or many communities were, to go out of that three-year cycle on the next go-around. We unfortunately were not granted that. So, once we go FY '20, the next time it'll have to be done is FY 2025.
Okay. Just a follow-up question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Will that, so that, we won't have to come back in three years, it'll be five years, and how will that affect our revenue generation for the town?
Well, they do incremental adjustments based upon sales and other data that the assessors collect. This information is a full review by the Department of Revenue of all our real and personal property. It should not impact the revenue stream. This has been going on, this is nothing new. It just puts it in a different cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Berthium.
So, it says that this includes associated software upgrades. Are we looking at a one-time upgrade, or is it upgrades for the next five years? And is there a support contract that comes with that software for the next five years?
Good question. The support contract is part of the operating budget within the assessor's office on an annual basis. This is a one-time upgrade. Typically, it's done every three to five years, when the software company has to revamp or retool to make the accommodations for changes that may exist. So we would not be looking for any additional funds for upgrades. I don't foresee that happening for a five-year period.
Anything else? There's zero motion.
Make a motion to recommend approval on Article 16.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. Article 17, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $46,000 from general fund revenues for the care and maintenance of the Mary D. Stone School Building and the Julia Bancroft School Building. Ms. Jacobson, can you just give us an update on where we're at with this?
Certainly, through the chair, as the board is aware, we have awarded the contract for the disposition of the schools to Penrose Properties LLC, and we are working closely with them on a daily basis, making progress toward the ultimate closing and disposition of those properties. Each school to Penrose for senior affordable housing. And, as we stated at the time that we sought the support of the board, this project will take a good couple of years. There is a lot of tax credit funding that has to be sought and obtained and secured by the developer from the state. We work on it, like I said, on a daily basis. We're down at the state, working with the developer to try to get those credits in place so we can move the project along. There is a process that has to be followed. Generally, these projects are not funded on the first round. They're usually funded on the second, but most likely the third round of funding. So, in the meantime, there are lots of pieces that have to go into place, but until that funding is secured, and they're guaranteed that they're gonna get those tax credits, the property remains in the hands of the town. So, this cost covers the insurance on the buildings, which is higher than had the buildings been occupied. So they're unoccupied, and that's the insurance, as well as short, general maintenance.
And upkeep.
I have to say, I wanna give the developer credit, there was some roof work that needed to be done on Mary D. Stone in the original portion of the building, the 1927-28 portion, and they donated the funds to do that, and it was about $6,000, because they wanna keep the building in good repair. So they've been great to work with, they're working with the town, they're helping us where they can to absorb some expenses, but this is just a standard cost that we've been putting in every year.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. Mr. Mitchell, and if Mr. Fairbanks is working on these DPW as well, could you please come up and join us? We'll take all of your articles next. We have Article 18, to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize a borrowing of $200,000 for upgrade, to upgrade various sections of gravity sewer line and manholes. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
If you could, I don't know if you have your article with you, but we're on Article 18.
Mm-hmm.
You could just tell us a little bit about that one.
Yes, this is in regard to the area of Upland Street, the break, the collapse that we had. What we're hoping is to curb this from happening again. We're gonna use this money to do inspections and repair or replace, hopefully not replace, but repair any of the lines downstream from this area, so it doesn't happen again.
And this is just in that area, up on Upland?
Either that area, and if there's money left in the area where we had the previous break off of the auto drive.
Is everyone familiar with the area you're discussing? Are there any questions?
Motion to recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article 19, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of $90,000 from sewer enterprise return, retained earnings for engineering and design services to install a sleeve under Route 20 to serve as an emergency means of pumping wastewater from the Pinrock Station to the Upper Blackstone Treatment Plan. If you would, please.
This article is something that we've been discussing and given us nightmares for years and years. The situation being is the Pinrock Pump Station pumps all of the wastewater from the Town of Auburn to the treatment plant. And, obviously, trying to bypass, if something ever happened, to the main, under Route 20, it's the main section right at Greenwood. It comes out behind McDonald's and goes diagonally across the main portion of the intersection. So if there was ever an issue, I mean, that line is 38 years old, I believe. So if there was ever a catastrophic failure, we would basically have to shut Route 20 down, as well as Greenwood Street, in order to, you know, get from one side of the street to the other, if you will, as well as shut the pump station down, shut the entire sewer system down, and have 20-plus, 20 to 30 septic hollers working in place of the pump stations. So what this plan is, it's the first of two steps. We wanna do the engineering, get that in place, get over the hurdles that's going to be needed. What we're hoping to do is directional drilling, so we don't have the, what's called, open cut, so we're not digging trenches. We'll actually be tunneling, more or less, under the intersection, find, you know, the shortest route, the easiest way for us to do that, put a sleeve under Route 20, so if anything ever happened, we'd be able to get, you know, from one side to the other now. But this is only for the engineering and the preliminary and final design of putting this pipe in place. And then, step two would be, hopefully, we'll have everything ready for the fall town meeting to come back and actually appropriate the money for the construction of this.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Berthium.
Do we have an approximate cost of the second phase?
It depends on the direction that we'll have to go. I mean, it could be, I mean, anyway, we talked anywhere from 250, 500,000 to possibly a million dollars. We don't, we don't know without, you know, getting into the engineering portion of it. Those are rough, rough numbers.
Mr. Berthium and then Mr. Holstrom.
So this is, this will be an alternate route, or is this a pipe that's going to go inside to reinforce a pipe that's there?
No, this will, this will be in addition to. Once this is in place, it'll allow us that if we decide, or whatever the recommendations of the engineers are, we may wanna use the new line as the primary line and keep the old line in place, but as a backup.
So you'll be able to divert?
Yes, through valving.
Thank you.
Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess we're on borrowed time with this line, then. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that, but I guess my question is, why wasn't it built into the original design when the Blackstone, the Upper Blackstone was put in?
I didn't design it.
No, I understand that.
No, I honestly can't, I don't.
Okay, but there is no other way to get that through? You have to, you have to design that, and whichever way you decide.
Yeah, you know, like I said, it's, the whole intersection has changed since it was originally put in, back in the 70s. You know, Auburn, Auburn is the, other than Worcester, the oldest member of, you know, the Upper Blackstone Water Pollution Abatement District. We were one of the first three, and so, obviously, the roads have changed considerably since the initial, so probably back in the mid to late 70s, it wasn't as big a deal, but now you've got, you know, three lanes each direction, two lanes on Greenwood Street, so it's, it'll be quite the, quite the undertaking.
Yes, then, after that, how old is the Pinrock Pumping Station now?
The station itself was built in 74.
We've got a lot of time on it. Is there any plan down the road for replacing, upgrading, doing any work to that?
That's, that's being done on an ongoing. Actually, we're in the second phase of, second round of upgrading pumps and whatnot, in the pump stations themselves. Those are easily accessible. So we have, back probably 14 years ago or so, shortly after I took over as superintendent, we had an article that we did a rehab on all the pump stations, and we replaced pumps and put in, you know, a newer design type of equipment.
I do all that.
Those, those pumps now have been rebuilt once, and now they, we're in the replacement phase of all the pump stations. So, that part of it is, you know, the pump stations themselves are in good shape. It's the infrastructure that's on the streets, the parts you can't see, is what's questionable.
Thank you.
Mr. Berthium, did you have another question?
Actually, yeah, relative to what you were just saying, what you can't see, I was talking to somebody from another town, and they pretty much have installed, I don't know if it's a surveillance system or some sort of video lines that they can kinda see their lines, is that something that we've ever looked into, or that you've heard of?
Well, I mean, we, we do it as part of an inspection process, you know, it's called CCTV, which is where we actually send a crawler down the sewer lines to do visual inspections. But as far as an ongoing, you know, inspection system, or, I don't know of any.
So that might be what he was referring to, was the crawler that you talked about?
That's what I, that's what I think, and we've, if you noticed, in our capital this year, we put in an extra $100,000 in the CIP under sewer line repair, and that hundred, the extra hundred is going towards inspection and to get onto a, you know, a rehab.
Thank you.
Process.
Are there any, we're on Article 19. Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next couple articles, the town planner will be up next, but we're gonna stay with DPW. So we're gonna move on to Article 22, 23, 24, for now. Article 22, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $12,000 from general fund revenues to replace the conveyor belt system on a DPW six-wheel dump truck. Who's handling that one?
I can be.
Go ahead.
Me or Jeff, don't matter.
Whoever. Go ahead.
We have, one of our salt trucks is, the conveyor belt is all rotted out, and we need to have it replaced for next season, so we're looking for the monies to help us replace that.
This is three years.
Are there any questions? Ms. Lola Lowery.
Through the chair, what's the lifespan on the new belt? How long do you think it'll last?
For the truck, we're trying to get anywhere from 15 to 20 years, so it's 10 years now, so, and this is our third truck that we have had this conveyor belt system done.
Problem is, the old, the existing system that's on there now is obsolete, and it would cost almost as much as a whole body to redo it. So what they do is they rip out the old section and put in a whole new, a newer design that's a little more up to today's standards.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. We're moving on to Article 23, still a DPW issue, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the $2,000 from general fund revenues for the cupola restorations at the Auburn High School.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll talk to this item.
Okay.
So, DPW, through facilities, recently removed the railing system off of the structure down at the high school, because it presented a hazard to anyone who may decide to climb on that, that structure. That railing system is being replicated by our facilities, hopefully ready for the fall next year. But in addition to that, we needed to remove some of the paint. It's peeling, it's flaking. There is some issues with the, with the removal of that paint, because it does contain some lead, and you have to be certified in order to remove that, so I believe our-
Both of them went out and got certified.
Our two facility men, Dennis and Jimmy, have been certified, so it's a project that they're, they're willing to undertake. It's just a matter of, of time at this point. But this is for the cost of the paint, the supplies, in order to complete that project.
Through the chair, if I can also just add in, I think it's important to note that prior to doing this, the town had looked into and received quotes from various companies to do the lead paint removal, and it was about $10,000, if not more. So, this project wasn't going to take place if the DPW employees were not willing to go and get that lead paint certification to allow us to do it, and it's really, it's just the cost of the supplies, as opposed to paying an outside vendor. So, once again, I just wanna point out that the DPW facility unit and the fact that the employees are willing to take this on are saving the town a significant amount of money and allowing us to go forward and renovate this, this historic structure.
Questions?
Just a quick question. I've probably been by it 100 times in the last three days, but while this project is going on, do we have, like, an orange storm fence around it? Are there any safety issues? We took down the railing now. If somebody does climb up, is there a problem with that they may fall off? Should we be putting a fence, you know, a storm fence around it? Will that do us any good?
Sorry, we took down the railings, those were all rotted, and that was the major danger over there, and it is pretty high for kids to have to climb up there to get on. I mean, anything's possible, but we haven't had any issues since the school's been built with anybody on the cupola over this.
So, we're comfortable with the safety over there, then?
I'm comfortable, but, yeah.
Okay.
Anything's possible.
The railing itself was the safety issue. If somebody got up there, leaned on it, they would've fallen off.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second with a question.
Certainly, go ahead, Ms. Lola Lowery.
Does the $2,000 include the cost of labor with the project?
No, the labor will be provided by the top, own town administration- No, the labor will be provided by the top, own town employees, so there's no outsourcing, there is no additional cost. It does tie up to individuals for a period of time to get the project completed, but no, it's, it's no, uh, no additional labor funds other than, uh, their weekly obligation.
Do we know how many, um, current estimate of how many hours will be put into, um, working on?
I could have, um, a facility maintenance, uh, one estimate, uh, get that estimate for you how many hours. It's, it's going to be a, a long process to get it done.
I know a lot of residents have supported it, so I will support the motion, I was just curious.
If there's nothing else, is there a mo-?
I'm sorry, through the chair, if I can add to that, we have made several attempts to get, uh, the vocational school to potentially get involved in this, as many of you may recall from a couple of years ago, and due to the lead paint issue that they were not able to do it. So we also tried, a couple of volunteers said that they were willing to help, then when they realized it was a lead paint issue, once again, it kind of pulled back. So we've looked at other mechanisms for doing it, and this is certainly the most cost-effective, and really the only way that we see that this is ever going to happen. I think rebuilding those railings, it takes some skill, too.
Oh, yeah.
Um, this isn't, it's not a standard railing system, and I think that was a lot of the cost, uh, when we were looking to outsource it, because that type of, of skilled labor is, is very expensive.
Is there anything else on this? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had a question under the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Article twenty-four, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $3,200 from the expendable trust cemetery perpetual care account for the purchase of two weed whackers, a cordless vacuum, a pressure washer, a tent top, an impact drill set, a cremation table, and landscaping.
I mean, after working at the cemetery for the last eight months, I found out, you know, some of the employees would bring their own pressure washer in from home, and so I told them to make a list of what they need, and, you know, these drills, a power washer, those are things they need, and a cordless vacuum and stuff like that, so.
These are basic necessities.
Basic, yes.
Okay.
Landscaping, we're going to try to plant, we take some trees down, plant some new trees, and-
Right. Mr. Bertheum, did you have a question?
I'll just say, nice job for doing that, because, um, I work at a cemetery and we have all of these things and use them every day, so, um, nice job going and getting that done, and I'll, uh, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Um, if you guys can just stay here one moment, I'm going to just flip through this. We, we do have Article twenty-seven, which is DPW Director and Library Director, are you guys going to take that one as well? Article twenty-seven? If you are, I'll just read it quickly. To see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose $40,000 from the balance, $61,076.91, if the appropriation approved under Article twenty of the May third, 2016 town meeting, um, for the purpose of installation of windows at the Auburn Public Library, the purchase and installation of an HVAC heat pump at the Auburn Public Library. Or, Mr. Kasnovich, did you want to take this one? Article twenty-seven.
So I believe that they're looking to amend, uh, a balance that was appropriated for, or borrowed for the replacement of the windows at the Auburn Public Library. Through discussions with Mr. Coyle and the library director, they're looking to, um, amend or repurpose $40,000 of the $61,000 remaining to make upgrades to the HVAC, uh, system down at the library, which they encountered several problems over this winter. Uh, and some much-needed repairs need to be done in order to keep that, uh, that unit efficient, um, as well as, um, keep it running on a, on a daily basis. So I know Ace Hardware or Ace Two-
Ace Temperature.
Ace Temperature, uh, was called several times during the course of the year because the system failed. Uh, this is just going to upgrade that system.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? This is Article twenty-seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Um, I think you guys are done, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we can have the town planner take, uh, Article twen- thirty, I think it is, so thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
And then, we are going to go back to Articles twenty and twenty-one. Caleb, if you want to join us? Where's it, who's taking this? Both of you?
Thank you.
Okay, come on up.
Excuse me.
And then I'll move on to see if there are any additional articles. So, good evening, gentlemen, thank you for waiting. Um, Article twenty, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $20,000 from general fund revenues for the master plan review committee's consultation services. Good evening.
Good evening.
Who's going to talk about that one?
Sure, so what this is, is a request for funding to help the master plan committee engage consultant services for the transportation chapter, that being Chapter seven.
Are there any questions, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Bertheum?
Are we looking at redirection of bus routes, um, what, when we say Chapter seventy? What are we, what are we looking for them to consult?
So, um, through the chair, the master plan, uh, is a comprehensive document that covers transportation throughout the entire town. It's going to cover, um, public transit, WRTA, et cetera, road improvements, certain intersections that are troublesome. You're going to get a comprehensive analysis of traffic data on some of the state layouts as well. But, um, as the master plan committee was examining a lot of the chapters on their own without consultant services, we found that Chapter seven was far too technical to take on by ourselves without the ability to collect the data out in the field. So, um, that's why we went to try to get some funding through consultants.
Uh, through the chair, I want to add to, um, the town plan is correct. We, for those who, who may not realize, when we first started the master plan process, the board had indicated that they'd like us to do this process without any funding. So we're so grateful to the committee that's taken this on, we have a lot of residents that are involved. It's a multi-year project, it's three to four years to get this done, and it's already probably been three, two and a half years at this point. And the committee has, has hit a wall on a couple of things that they just can't do on their own. A lot of this is data-driven, the CMRPC just came out with some recent analysis on traffic that we can incorporate, so it reduced that cost to us a little bit, but all told, this would be the only funds that we're spending for master plan, that we had received quotes for 150 to 200,000 dollars three years ago. Um, so there is also a, if I'm, if I'm correct, a mapping component to this? Okay, so it's the transportation data that we just don't have the ability to do, we don't have that kind of, um, equipment, and the same thing with the mapping. But this would be the only cost that we foresee to get this done, and with the ability to get these two chapters done, we could wrap up the master plan process, um, once these pieces are done. There's still other pieces that are being worked on, obviously, it's, it's, it's very difficult, but the committee has sought our assistance with some help.
Are there any questions?
Motion recommend?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lola Liberty, are there any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Article twenty-one, to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the borrowing of $300,823 to fu- to fund the purchase of existing streetlights from National Grid and the conversion of existing streetlights to any of energy-efficient and long-lasting LED. Said some is to be spent under the direction of the town manager. So who, who wants to take this one, Mr. Kasnovich? Or?
I would say the town, if I may, the town planner, energy manager. This has been a project that we've all worked on for several months, and this is a follow-up to a town meeting vote that we had in the fall with a presentation at the time, so-
Yes, so the-
Better, energy expert.
Thank you. Um, so the LED streetlight project has been ongoing for better part of eighteen months anyways. We're conducting analysis through assistance with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which is, um, I'm going to call MAPC going forward. They provide us with a lot of data to support that LED streetlight conversion would be not only an energy efficiency measure that would help with our green community status, but also provide a significant cost savings over the lifespan of LED lights. And in addition to the project costs, and what you're seeing here is a large number, we've also applied for a grant, for the Green Communities Grant 2018 for full funding, fingers crossed, for 250,000 to cut a significant chunk out of that project. So the purpose of this town meeting warrant article is in case we do not get the grant, so we can still fund the project on our own. Through the pro- through the program, it's called the Rapid Retrofit Program, it has to be completed by December 31st of 2018. We already have a consultant onboard, chosen through the RFP process this past December. They've already started the audit out in the field, if you've seen their vehicles out and about around town. So the audit will give us a complete inventory, they'll then give us a design and what lights to choose, given neighborhoods and some of their, uh, data-driven models, and at that time, the installation would be completed prior to the end of the, end of the year. So the funding you see before us at town meeting, as I reiterate, is in case we do not get the grant that we're asking for.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? We are going to move on to-
Can I ask?
Yep, okay.
I know this is me, but I'm going to ask Madam.
Okay, so we'll look at Article twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Article twenty-eight is to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $9,000 from dog license fees for the purpose of installing monitoring cam- cameras at the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound. Who's taking this one?
I can. Basically, it's just installing cameras at, at the dog compound for added security. Located at the DPW garage.
Uh, those cameras, will they be hooked to a recorder, or are they just monitored by somebody in a building somewhere?
I believe they're like all other town cameras, they'd be monitored and recorded at the police station. So if we had to go back and check them, we could go back to the police station and check the film.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Kasnovich, if I can just confirm for, for members, um, the articles presented here tonight, um, if all approved, will still, um, provide us with a balanced budget?
Yes, uh, it utilizes, at this point in time, and Finance Committee still has to take action on several budgets Wednesday, depending on the, the outcome of their vote, would only utilize, leaves about $350,000 of tax levy revenue still available, so we would not be taxing it the full two and a half percent.
So these are supported by town administration.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to recommend, is there a second? Was that Ms. Lola Liberty? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Article twenty-nine, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend the Town of Auburn zoning bylaws, Section 3.7 prohibited uses by adding subsection 3.7.7 recreational marijuana as follows. Prohibited uses, the Town of Auburn prohibits operations of all types of non-medical marijuana establishments as defined in general law, Chapter ninety-four G, Chapter one, including marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, and any types of licensed marijuana businesses. Who's going to talk about this one? Go ahead.
So this warrant article is the same as a ballot question that took place in May of 2017 at the last annual town meeting. As you all know, recreational marijuana was made legal in November of 2016 through the national election ballot, and the town followed it up with a ballot question to, um, consider the sales of recreational marijuana in town. This would not affect personal consumption in any way, in any personal use for, uh, folks that, that need this material, but this would only involve the sales of, of recreational marijuana facilities in Auburn. And the ballot, and ballot question has to, according to the Attorney General, directly reflect the same language that was on the ballot question. That's what's before us today, minus one word that we heard from town council recently that will be removed before the town meeting floor, I believe. I'm sure that Jacerson could elaborate on that.
No, thank you, that's, you're exactly right. Through the chair, town council reviewed the warrant articles and got back to us, and stated that, as Matt said, the warrant article has to exactly match the ballot question. The ballot question was based on, at the time, Mass. General Law Ninety-four G, Section one. Mass. General Law has, was revised following our town meeting vote, which we knew it may be, we weren't sure how the state was going to do it. They revised it, and they now have a new definition for recreational marijuana facilities that's far more extensive than this. That being said, at the time, our ballot question had to exactly reflect the way the law was written, and this is how the law was written. So this also has to be how our, our warrant is written, but for the word, as you see in the first line, "non-medical." The planning board, I believe, Matt, voted to add the word "non-medical" to clarify for people that this was not related to medical marijuana facilities, but the law didn't specify that it's non-medical. It is non-medical, but town council has advised that on the floor of town meeting, that a motion be made to amend this article to remove the words "non-medical." So I, I think perhaps if you do vote to support this, you might want to vote to support it, um, with the recommendation of town council to remove the words "non-medical."
Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Lola Liberty?
I just have a comment. I think that there were some problems with, uh, this vote. I talked to a lot of people on Election Day that meant to vote one way and voted the other on both sides of the issue, and the vote did turn out the way it did, and the town voted the way it did. Um, of course, the town voted the opposite, as it did in November versus the local election when the turnout was much smaller, but I just want to voice my concerns with this question and how it was done.
So, do I?
Well, I guess, um, want to be sure I know where we are with this. We're saying all types of non-medical. Do we, uh, I guess my question would be, is to take no action on it this time until further? Is there going to be any other changes to this?
No, through the chair, the, the, uh, the final regulations that were drafted and posted last month became effective upon the posting of those by the Attorney General's office, so those regulations are final. Uh, they, those regulations, the laws, now reflect both medical and recreational, and there are specific, um, prohibitions under each, but medical marijuana cannot be prohibited, only the recreational. The only difference is, our definition has to follow the original law.
Mm-hmm.
That was on the ballot question. Since that changed, and this, I raised that question as a member of the Cannabis Advisory Board, why aren't we making this clear for business, for the, for the businesses and for municipalities? Because now there's two different sets of definitions, the original one and now a revised definition. Um, they didn't make any reference in the new law to those communities that took this vote upon the, um, upon the assertion and the language in the law at the time. So I think it's just something that, as we move forward, we may, down the road, have to come back and do another bylaw, but for right now, we need to get this one in place because we have a, uh, moratorium that expires in December of 18.
Correct.
So the bylaw has to be revised to reflect the ballot question that prohibited it.
Mr. Bertheum?
Just a point of clarification, so the, the ballot question, are you saying that the ballot question, uh, was written, um, like 3.7.7, but did not include the word "non-medical"?
Correct. And then the planning board added the word "non-medical" because they felt it would be a clarifier, so people would understand that we weren't prohibiting medical marijuana, that we were just prohibiting recreational marijuana. Because under the law at the time, the word "recreational" wasn't used, it was used as, I believe, "commercial" might have been it, or, um, "personal use." There were a couple of different terms, but it wasn't referred to at the time as "non-medical." So the planning board, I understand why, felt it would be important to add the word "non-medical," so the voters knew that we were not asking for prohibition on that. But according to town council and the Attorney General's office, the, the bylaw has to reflect the exact wording on the, on the ballot question, which was approved by the Attorney General, the town council first, and then the Attorney General.
Ms. Holstrom?
Uh, through the chair, uh, can the planning board develop that bylaw by December of 2018 so it can go to town meeting? Or can we do that?
Sure, um, through the chair, I, I don't mind answering that. So, um, part of, part of the reason that we're using the ballot question exactly in the way the language it was, is because there's no examples out there for us to follow. This is a brand-new thing, and we're, there's a lot of towns out there that are proposing legislation for this annual town meeting coming up, and seeing what gets passed by the Attorney General and what gets denied is going to give us a good blueprint for how to proceed with ours as we move forward.
Do you have the time to do that after the May annual, uh, town meeting, to develop something by the fall town, special town meeting? I guess I-
Through the chair, I just want to be clear, I understand, so this is the actual bylaw that was-
That is the, okay, all right.
So this will be voted on in May.
Correct.
And then the Attorney General has ninety days to review it after town meeting and make a determination if she has.
Thank you, now I understand the process, thank you.
Mr. Bertheum?
Just if I could, one last thing. So we said that the moratorium is ending when?
December of 2018.
Thirty-first. 31st.
December of 2018.
This year.
This year. So, will, does it automatically renew? Or is it going to be on the fall ballot again?
Through the chair, there's no renewal of the moratoriums. They were granted to communities from the Attorney General for one time only, to allow communities to develop language in their bylaws in anticipation of the final regulations being solidified by the state in April of this year. So, now, April of this year, the final regs are in effect. Communities cannot now go back and get moratoriums. And we would not be able to extend it. But our moratorium only, we did two things at the same time. We did the moratorium, which was on the May 17 ballot, I mean, excuse me, town meeting warrant. Then, the ballot had the question as to whether to prohibit recreational uses. And when the ballot question was developed, it was developed based on the law, approved by the Attorney General, along with the explanation of what a yes vote means and what a no vote means. So, that was standard practice in all communities. We all used the same language. It was all approved by the Attorney General's office. So, at this point, our moratorium would expire with no opportunity to extend it, according to what we were told when it was first passed. And we had one of the longer moratoriums. And the state is not going to be making any further changes to the law at this point. The law was established and is in effect this month.
Like to make a motion and recommend approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Can we, before I vote to approve, do we have to add the part to take out the wording?
Through the chair, I would recommend, the board may want to say that you vote to recommend, you vote to recommend approval, including the town council recommendation to remove the words. Because at some point, you're voting right now on an article that will be amended on the floor of the town meeting.
Would you want to...
I'll change. Yeah, I'll amend that motion, yes.
Add that language?
You want to change it? Second it?
No. I know, second.
You didn't second it?
No.
No, you did. Yeah, okay. So, we have the amended motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, it's three to one. Article 30, I am not going to read the whole thing, but you can see there's a proposal before you to go before the general court, to see if the town will vote to authorize board of selectmen to petition the general court for the enactment of special legislation as follows: To authorize the relocation of Faith Avenue and the conveyance of remnant parcels of real property remaining therefrom, provided, however, that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes in form only to the bill unless a board of selectmen approves amendments thereto before enactment by the general court. Who wants to take this one? I know this is the Faith Ave Diamond property. Go ahead.
I can give a general overview first, just what's happening. So, Diamond Auto Group has received definitive subdivision approval, excuse me, to realign Faith Avenue. And this would propose a new section of roadway that would eliminate the S-turn and the odd layout of Faith Avenue to give Diamond kind of a campus environment without a road dividing through it. The new roadway would be, kind of make a straight line from Faith Ave off of Route 20 to a turn that's not in the middle of the campus. Diamond would be responsible for building that roadway. They'd be responsible for paying for that new roadway and posting a bond to make sure that that roadway gets finished. By doing so, Diamond has asked that the discontinued portion of Faith Avenue become their property so that they can realign their campus and rearrange their parking lot. As far as the legal language that's in front of us, I believe the town manager could elaborate further. Generally, it was a council, a town council plus a legal council from Diamond, both collaborated to create the language that's before you this evening.
Is there anything you want to add to this?
No, he did it.
Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will this affect any residents along Faith Avenue? I don't know exactly where this road's going to go through because we don't have a print or anything. I wasn't sure if it was going, because I know there are some residents on Faith Avenue past the church.
Correct.
And I didn't know if that would affect them at all.
Correct. So, at the time of definitive subdivision approval, there were still three residences that existed, right?
Still.
At the time of approval. Diamond has since bought those three properties. So, there is no longer residences abutting the new section of Faith Avenue that would be part of this project.
So, that negates my second question about abutters. There won't be any.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I can also add that this has been before the planning board since last summer.
Yes.
Several public hearings. The petitioner had brought this actually up maybe two years ago, and then had a number of other steps that they had to take to get to this point. So, town administration's been working with them and the planning board. And the planning board voted to approve this?
Yes. Oh, I believe it was in January. But even so, and to further your point, Diamond had several conservation commission matters to address once they originally introduced this several years ago. Those have been addressed. They received an order condition to do that work. And the planning board wasn't going to move a step further with a definitive subdivision plan until all the conservation measures were addressed, which they have.
Mr. Bertham, then Mr. Holstrom?
I know many years ago, we had an incident, a fire incident up at BJ's. And I know we stretched our lines to a hydrant on Faith Ave. I'm not sure how far down that went. Are we familiar with the hydrants there? And would they then be on Diamond's land?
Through the chair, it's a great question. That did come up during the subdivision review. The Auburn Water District, excuse me, made a recommendation to relocate a fire hydrant that Diamond was willing to accommodate. And it would be within a new right of way.
Mr. Holstrom?
I guess, yeah, through the chair, I guess that was my concern, that public safety, will they be able to access the property? Will they be able to access Route 20 from Faith Avenue? Will they be able to go all the way through? Will there be a cut through so that, you know, emergency vehicles can go through whatever Diamond parking lot? Like I say, I don't understand the plan, but I know where Faith Avenue is. And not knowing where it's going to go, will they still be able to have access for all emergency vehicles to go through there?
Yes. Through the chair, this roadway will be built to the subdivision standards of our subdivision rules and regulations that were adopted in 2012. They will be wide enough for emergency vehicles. And the way that this will be laid out, you could pass through Faith Avenue and not have to drive through Diamond's campus. It would only be on the right side of you if you were coming off of Route 20.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
Opposed.
Mr. Carpenter? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. It's four to one. Sharon on that? Mr. Carpenter opposed. Okay. So, we've got a few articles left. I want to move to Article 25. We have a piece of paper that was given to you tonight. Let's get to Article 25, to see if the town meeting will vote to approve a grant of a permanent easement on town-owned land to the Greater Worcester Land Trust for the use of accessing the Granger Cliffs property.
Through the chair, it is a town manager item, but I'd like Matt and Caleb to stay just in case you have any additional questions. But this was a request that was made to us a couple of years ago by the Greater Worcester Land Trust. And I believe it was brought up by Mr. Ethier at a meeting, maybe six months ago, who asked us if we were giving any consideration to walking trails or connecting town property to some of the nice land that's up there that was owned by Cliff Granger, who recently passed away. Upon Mr. Granger's passing, the Greater Worcester Land Trust had entered into an access agreement with the Granger Cliffs. And I believe Mr. Granger's son can live there in perpetuity. And then, the Greater Worcester Land Trust actually would have ownership of that land. And they want it for conservation purposes, for open space purposes, to access some walking trails. But they need to get an easement on town property to get to the Granger Cliffs property. So, we've worked with them, Bill Coyle, DPW Director, Caleb, Matt, myself, and Eddie. I've had several meetings with them to look at the map of the town-owned land and make sure that the easement that they requested, which I believe is 20 feet wide, runs along the perimeter of our property. And it's a very short area. It would not preclude us from ever using our land for anything else should we ever need to. It makes sense. We want to have access to this beautiful land. The Greater Worcester Land Trust would make some improvements on the easement that they would be responsible for maintaining, so there'd be no cost to the town for doing any of this. Is there anything I should add to it?
Mr. Bertham?
Quick question. So, is, would the easement be near any residents? Would cars be going and parking alongside the street to access these walking trails or anything? Is that going to create parking issues with us along our streets or easement?
Sure. So, through the chair, this easement is not for roadway. It's only for foot traffic. Only would be for a hiking trail to access from one parcel to the next. Greater Worcester Land Trust doesn't have a finite, at least a concept plan as to how this would be laid out yet. They just wanted to make sure we covered this now. As sure of many of you heard, Cliff Granger had recently passed, and it's all in the trust now. And the Greater Worcester Land Trust, having worked with them, wanted to make sure that this was accomplished now, so that it gives them the options to develop hiking trail in the future. They've looked at three different ideas for where parking could go for a potential recreational site, but nothing concrete at this time whatsoever. But for the easement itself, it would only be for foot traffic as part of a hiking network.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Mr. Liberty, second it. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both have voted. Thank you for being here. Sharon, did we do Article 4?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have Article 26 next, which is to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $6,375 from general fund revenues for the purchase of ClearGov Insights platform, including setup training and support. Mr. Kasnovich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a new financial software platform that we would have access to. This is a very powerful financial tool that could be utilized by town administration for a number of reasons. Could be used for negotiation, where we can do some trending analysis. This does provide financial and statistical data that is received as a result of our year-end filing reports to the Department of Local Services, as well as educational data that's provided to the Department of Ed. This software package is really unlimited. It's a very powerful tool. We just were involved in a demonstration last week that we were most impressed with. This can also be used by the citizens of our community as well. So, we're hoping to open this up, so our citizens will win, and they can compare Auburn to other communities. What are their tax dollars going for? How much of their tax dollars are going for public safety? How much is going for education? You can look at it on a multi-year use. We can select communities to do comparisons with, to see if our tax dollars is being spent wisely, if they are being spent consistent with other communities of similar demographics, similar income levels. The possibilities are just unlimited, and we're quite impressed with what this can do. This money would allow us to set up this new software application, as well as to pay support costs on an annual basis. So, this is something that we would have to build into the annual operating budget every year going forward. But this would just be our initial cost in order to get this thing up and running.
Are there any questions? Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we go with this program, how long will it take to implement the program? Once you get the software in place and get it up and running?
So, right now, they're allowing us to be a tap into this database at no cost. We're not committed to this unless town meeting approves it. We're doing some data dumps now to provide to them that will kind of refine or define Auburn's chart of accounts to this application. So, once we get them the data dumps, we're going to have to work with them to fine-tune and to look at the data to make sure that it's accurate, to make sure that it's what we want it to be. We can go back as many years as we want, probably have about a five-year look back. So, we have to provide data dumps to them. Once we find year one dump, the other is automatic. It's just a matter of them formatting the initial year.
Maybe about a month.
Probably about a month of working with ClearGov to define what we want to see. So, we're hoping probably over the next 45 days.
Mr. Holstrom?
Sign of the times, Eddie. What kind of protections are there in a system like this? You're saying that the general public would have access to those numbers, figures, one way or another. Systems are being hacked, numbers are being changed. You don't know what's going on out there. What kind of protections are there so that somebody can't come in and, you know, hack it?
So, I want to make it clear, this in no way, they host this platform, so they're not going into our service to access this information. In terms of the data we're providing to them, it's all public data anyway. People can go on the DLS website and obtain some of this data right now. This just gives you a lot more than what they can give you. And we're able to build our own models and pull out what we want to see. There are security provisions on it that will allow us to modify and to set up what we want the general public to see. That's going to take some time to set up. But no, we're not going to compromise our data in any way, or our, no one can hack into our server.
So, basically, it'd be a read-only?
Yes.
Okay.
And through the chair, if I may add, the state has really supported this company and this platform through their IT grants. Many communities applied for an IT grant to get this underway, because the state made them a contractor. They supported it. They said it would be eligible for IT grant. We're not eligible for another IT grant, because we currently have one to implement the software system for the permitting. So, after working with ClearGov, we were potentially looking at joining in on a regional grant application, and it was determined that we were ineligible for it because we already have that grant. So, they, as Ed said, they agreed to waive the initial setup costs and give us free access to this until July 1. So, we can see how it works, get used to it. The whole intent here, as is with our IT grant, is just more transparency, more ability for the public to access data that we have anyway. It just, now, if you get a public information request, it takes time to do it. We've got to go through the systems. We have to pull the information. This makes it so that people can go on and get it on their own. They can go in and they can do comparisons. They can look at pie charts. They can see where their tax dollars are going. It's just, it's a transparent system. And we just want to make sure the public has access to the data easier right now. Yes, as I said, you can go through the DOR to get it. You can go through various websites. You can go through ACS. There are all different places to get data. This puts it all in one place. And it just goes along with the transparency and enhancement efforts at the state level. And now, local municipalities are trying to do the same thing. We just had our demonstration, as Ed said, the week before last, and just to show us what this can do, and it's pretty amazing. We were really impressed with it. Once we get our information to them, we can actually do a demonstration and show all of you how it works. Right now, there's just, there's just your basic data in there. It's not going to show you all the things that it's capable of. So, we were asking if they could get that up and ready by May 1. Unfortunately, our town meeting's so early this year, and, you know, we're trying to get them to work as fast as they can, because we'd like to have the ability to show all of you and show town meeting. I don't know the entire thing will be up and ready by May 1, but it will be available to us free until July 1.
Mr. Holstrom?
And one final question. You said that we'd have to build this into the annual budget. Have any idea what it would cost us per year for this program?
Yeah, I think a little over $7,000 per year.
So, and if I may add, not only is it good for the transparency for the public to access this information, it's very helpful for us in developing budgets as well. We'll be able to provide more information. We can look at breakdowns like this. Right now, we have to do that ourselves.
So, your recommendation is to go forward?
Absolutely. We were very impressed with it. We think the public will think it's great. It will be called on our website. It will be an icon that will be called the Transparency Center. And residents can go in and get all kinds of information. in and get all kinds of information. I think it's a great way to go. And again, internally, it's going to help every department in developing their budgets. In some efforts, we sat today with FIRE on a couple of issues and showed them just the mock-up of what this would look like. And it's pretty amazing, the data that you can pull up.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? So, we are on Article 26. Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, Sharon. So, we have three articles left, Articles 31, 32, and 33, all done by citizens' petition. It is to see if town meeting will vote to amend the Auburn zoning bylaws regarding RMDs. I can read them all if you want, but it is three adjustments to the bylaw. Mr. Holstrom.
I guess my question is, has the planning board seen these and what was their recommendation?
Through the chair, I believe at the last meeting, the board voted not to have us send this to the planning board.
They voted?
I believe this board voted not to have us forward it to the planning board because the discussion was that these were citizens' petitions. So, it was, the board discussed it, and then, I don't know if you voted not to have us send it, but the board said that you didn't want us to send it. So, we did not send it. But I would tell you that these citizens' petitions even, they will have to go to the planning board at some point. They still have to go through the whole process, correct, Matt? Through the chair, if I can have Matt explain what the process will be.
Thank you. So, just wanted to clarify, Ms. Jacobson, at the last selectmen's meeting, the board voted to send it to the planning board, but they voted not to put it to the zoning bylaw review committee first.
Sorry, that's it. It was not the board of the planning board.
Okay. So, but to answer your question.
I was on vacation last week. I wasn't on a cruise and I wasn't with any of you on a cruise.
I think you're still on that cruise.
But I was, I think maybe, I wish I was on a cruise.
It's okay. So, the planning board is actually meeting tomorrow night. So, the board has not made a recommendation yet.
Okay. Thank you. Are we going to take these together or take them one by one?
Whatever the board wishes.
I'll take them all together, 31, 32, and 33, and my motion will be not to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
So, it is four opposed, one abstention chair. So, we are finished with the warrant. Thank you, everyone. So, moving on, I would like to move up, let me check where it is. We have the chief and company here. So, if I'd like to, and if I'd entertain a motion to move up Agenda Item 6A, Vote to Authorize Application Acceptance and Expenditure of Funds from Safer Grant.
All moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, voted chief and company, please. Thank you for waiting. We have the document with us.
Late night tonight, Dan. What's that? Late night tonight. The new system is not working well.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last Friday, I had sent all of you an email with a cover letter and several spreadsheets outlining the numbers that we'll talk about tonight. So, I'm here before you this evening, looking for support of the board to allow us to apply for a Safer Grant, which stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. The Safer Grant program has been around for many years, but as I had indicated in my cover letter to you last week, this is not a grant that I had ever even really thought of applying for before. Because the way the program was established when it first came out was it took on a little bit of a, I guess for lack of a better term, a tone that I'm not quite sure was the way that it was originally intended. But when the Safer Grant program first began, a lot of larger cities were applying for the grants in order to avoid layoffs within their departments. So, much of the federal funding was diverted to, you know, again, even specifically Massachusetts, you know, Fall River, Springfield, Worcester received one. So, a lot of larger departments were receiving this grant in order to avoid layoffs. Many of them received this grant several years in a row. It's a three-year grant period, and many of them received the grant several years in a row. And then, at some point, when they would apply for it again and they were denied, the city would turn around and they would either lay members off, or if they had lost members through attrition over that period of time, they may necessarily didn't have to lay anybody off. But at the end of the day, their total complement was the same as it was three years ago when they had received the grant. So, the federal government sort of looked back and said, this isn't working the way that it was intended. The purpose of the grant was to provide adequate staffing to try, for departments, to try to better meet NFPA 1710, which is the adequate response standards, to place four firefighters on an engine. For many years, you've heard me talk to this board and the Finance Committee about my desire to increase our minimum shift staffing from six to seven. Myself, the deputy town administration, we've been working for several years, coming up with the plan on how to do that, when was the right time to implement it. And fortunately, we're beginning sort of Phase 1 of that plan in fiscal 19 by hiring, we have two firefighters in next year's budget, budgeted for a half-year, so they'll be coming on in January. So, that's step one, with then the following two hopefully coming on in FY '20, which will get our minimum shift staffing from six to seven, which would be a total shift complement during the day of nine. Now, it's important to point out, I think, you know, when you look at the history of our department, the community, town administration, you know, past and present boards of selectmen, Finance Committee, town meetings, they've been very supportive of the fire rescue department, and we can't say enough about how much we appreciate that. And there's been a lot done over the last several years to address the staffing needs within our department. The big one really allowing us to go 24 hours a day. Prior to much of the staffing needs that we addressed, it was a Monday-through-Friday operation. The doors of the station were locked at 5:00. We weren't open on Fridays and Saturdays, and, you know, the door reopened on Sunday night. So, much of the staffing that we have gotten to this point really addressed 24-hour coverage. The current six-person minimum that we have today is the same shift staffing that we had when Chief Bellhumor was the chief of department in 2001, when there were six firefighters working. So, our minimum shift staffing has maintained the same, even though we've had growth within the department because we had to cover 24 hours a day. Our minimum shift staffing has maintained the same for 17 years. With that said, just over the last 10-year period, we've seen an 18% growth in our call volume. Just from 16 to 17 alone, we saw a 2.5% increase in our call volume, but it averages out over that 10-year period to just about 2%. So, the department is getting busier. The last three years in a row, we've had our busiest years on record, and there's really no signs, at least statistically, that that's going to slow down. So, my conversations with town administration and yourselves over the last couple of years have really focused around getting that minimum increased from six to seven for a total shift complement of nine. But it was in my cover letter this year to town administration and the Finance Committee that ultimately, over the next couple of years, our current call volume, current operation, we really need to be at 10. The town operates two staffed fire stations, and right now, there are three firefighters assigned to the West Street Fire Station. If we are at our minimum staffing at six, there are only two firefighters at that station, which means when there is an ambulance call, which is every day, many times a day, the station is empty and the fire truck is essentially shut down. So, the additional goal of getting to 10 would ensure that we have a total of four firefighters assigned to the West Street Station, where we would be able to, again, things are moving very swiftly every day. But with four people assigned to the station, it would allow us to at least handle an ambulance call and a fire call with two people, which is not ideal, but if all four people were in the station, we would be able to better meet NFPA 1710 standards by having four firefighters respond on the truck. So, that has been the goal that I have communicated to town administration. They have been working hard to come up with a plan on how to do that and how to get us there, hopefully in the next four years. So, that brings us back to the Safer Grant. The federal government has, within the last year, maybe year and a half, sort of changed the way in which they are distributing staffing grants, where more smaller departments, even smaller than us, smaller to mid-sized departments, that is where the grant money is being directed to. Just locally here in District 7, within the last year to year and a half, the towns of Sturbridge, Charlton, Spencer, and Oxford have all received Safer Grants to address some of their staffing needs. The way that the grant program is laid out is that, and my request before you tonight, and I'll explain the numbers in a little more detail to have them make sense, my request tonight is I would be seeking to apply for a total of eight firefighters on this grant. And if we were to be successful in getting the grant, the federal government would pay 75% of salaries and benefits for the first two years, so year one, year two. They would pay 35% of those salaries and benefits in year three. And then, in year four, we would own 100% of the salaries and benefits of those members. Now, why I think that now is the time to, as I had mentioned before, I had never considered a grant because the reality is, is we were most likely going to be denied because the money was being directed towards the cities. But we've certainly seen a change in that with smaller and mid-sized departments being issued grants. But the way that it would break down is this, and this is why I think now is the right time. The town has started to make the commitment to bring our minimum staffing from six to seven, which would be a total complement of nine, by essentially committing two firefighters in next fiscal year, and then it would be proposed for two firefighters in fiscal '20, so a total of four members. If the town is looking to make that commitment anyway, I see no harm in applying for the grant in order to receive money to offset costs that we've already sort of identified that we want to do, that that's a goal that we want to get to. Why I decided to add in the additional four positions was really the same rules apply. If the goal was, over the next four years, to try to increase the shift complement from nine to 10, again, it's a four-year grant period. In my mind, it's sort of a no-brainer that why wouldn't we apply for the grant to try to get them to offset the cost 75, 75, 35, in something that is really already in our five-year plan and has been articulated. So, I'm not sure if you have the spreadsheet in front of you, but essentially, you know, the way that it would break down is that for the first two years, we would be looking at $171,000 of, you know, we would be required to pay $171,868 for the eight positions. If we didn't apply for the grant, we would own just shy of that on the positions that we're looking to put on anyway over the next couple of years. And the deputy can, the deputy put the spreadsheet together so he can certainly answer any But that's sort of where we are at this point. I guess I'll stop there and open it up to any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, chief, and thank you, deputy, for being here tonight. We've had a discussion before, one-on-one in the office, and I guess what you have to explain, why you need these men. And I guess just to preface it is, I was a call firefighter. I've been out there six years now. And in the course of the time, towards the end of my career there, we found that the call department was dwindling in numbers. And I guess from that point, I'll give it to you and let you explain a little bit about what the need is for manpower, because I was, in effect, dead-set against more full-time firefighters. But over the course of the years, I could see that the call members were dwindling, but the town services still had to be maintained. So, I'll let you take it from there and explain a little bit about the need for manpower.
Absolutely. You know, I don't think it's any secret that call and volunteer firefighters is a struggle, not only here in the town of Auburn, but this is an issue that every fire department, combination, fire department in Massachusetts is facing, and quite frankly, across the nation. It's a well-documented topic. And if you were to do some, you know, simple Google searches on the reduction of call firefighters in that state, you'll have days' worth of reading on that topic. As a matter of fact, I published a white paper that was distributed both in the Commonwealth and nationwide on the reduction of call firefighters here in Massachusetts District 7, which is 25 cities and towns in southern Worcester County. That white paper can be viewed on our website at auburnmassfire.org. It's under the educational section. But it's a five- or six-page white paper that I think really outlines the issues that not only we're facing here in Auburn, but the 24 remaining cities and towns in Worcester County are facing, where all of them were surveyed as to why they felt there was a reduction in call firefighters. And what we were able to do was really kind of compile a top 10 list of reasons. And the reality is, is that it's the same reasons across every community. It's very difficult for people to volunteer. The time constraints on people today are much greater than they were 20, 30 years ago. 20, 30 years ago, most families, I'm not saying all, but most families were not dual-income families. Many families are not only dual-income today, but each partner has, you know, one or two jobs, commitments with kids. But the big one is really the requirements in training, and Mr. Holstrom, Mr. Bertham, you can both speak to this, you know, as call firefighters that, you know, got on 20 years ago. You know, when I got on the fire department in 1989 and joined as a call firefighter, I walked through the front door. I was handed a pair of boots, a coat, and a helmet on night one, and said, that's Don. Follow Don around and he'll show you what to do. And that was essentially the extent of my training. It was all on-the-job training. That is not the case in 2018. We just appointed, as a matter of fact, today, a new call firefighter to the department. He was sworn in in the town clerk's office this morning. We did, over the last year, we did a recruitment drive for call firefighters. I think it was well-advertised. We advertised it on our social media pages. Auburn Mass Daily ran some stories. We ran a story in The Telegram. Chief Bob Parsons did a story on recruitment and retention of call firefighters within the district that we shared locally. We got two applications. Out of a year's worth of recruitment, we got two applications. We interviewed both candidates. One did not pass a background check. The other one was sworn in this morning. He's a good candidate, but what he has ahead of him in terms of training today is he will be attending the Mass Fire Academy Call Vol Program in June. That's a five-month program, 10 hours a week. Once he finishes that program and gets state and nationally certified, he'll have to come back to the department. Our call firefighters are unionized. So, by contract, he'll be required to now get cleared to operate all of the department's equipment internally. Our call firefighters are on a two-year probation just because of, again, they're not full-time employees, so it takes them much longer to get brought up to speed. But the reality is, is that that call firefighter that we appointed today, by the time he does all of his initial training, all of his, you know, internal requirements, begins to respond to emergency calls on a limited level because he has a full-time job, the reality is, is that we're not going to see any real value out of this employee from experience level for about four years. Okay? So, that's a long time when we have staffing needs, you know, today. So, full-time employees, they certainly provide a much greater consistency, you know, to the department, not to mention that our career people are cross-trained. Many of our call firefighters are not EMT, so they're not cross-trained on the ambulance. We are a fire EMS operation. So, that cross-training is critical. We're able to do dual roles with career personnel. So, I hear you, Mr. Holstrom, and you and I have had this conversation many, many times. And I spent a large part of my career dedicated to training call and volunteer firefighters. I received an award for it. I started out as a call and volunteer firefighter. I get it. But times have changed, and we cannot expect today into But times have changed, and the, we cannot expect today in 2018 from our call firefighters what we did even 10 years ago, but 20, 30 years ago. And I think both of you, again, knowing the current operation, knowing what you, you know, in your experience as call firefighters, I think you would have to agree with that statement that things have changed. And the annual requirements for training are much greater than they were before. We can't get, you know, I look at the list of open board and committee positions that we have in town that we have a hard time filling, and we're looking for people to come to, you know, a meeting every other week for a couple of hours, to have someone come in and say, "I want to be a call firefighter," and for us to say, "Well, you got to do, you know, 250 hours of initial training, training every other Monday night, you know, four or five different state and national certifications that you have to review annually, on top of, you know, 50% training requirement, 25% attendance on emergency calls." That's a lot, it's a lot to ask on part-time people. But again, the cross-training is really the bigger thing because, again, we are a fire EMS agency.
Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you for that, because that's an in-depth discussion of what it was. And I know there was a lot of people said that, you know, after I left the fire department, got to the Board of Select, and there's going to be a full-time fire department, and that's all it's going to be that I want to have done. And that's not the case. I want to be sure that the services are provided to the town, and it's looking like, that's what it is. I mean, it's not the same old woodhouses anymore. There's a lot that have to be, you're involved with, with training, and you've got to have eyes in all sides of your head. But I guess I'm going to try to compare apples and oranges, and I guess with the monies. What I'm saying is, the police department at one time before was, through the state, had the Quinn bill. The Quinn bill, they were going to pay for a lot of the salaries of the police officers at one time, and then all of a sudden, it was handed over to the town. Now, the Quinn bill was still in place, and depend upon your education is how much more you got. And we wound up eating all of it towards the end, and now the Quinn bill, my understanding is, no longer. But going to the SAFER grant, you're talking about eight firefighters. You're talking 75, 75, 35, and then the fourth year, we own them. Good chunk of change. I guess, I want the services. I want to be sure the protection is there. But I guess, and I want to see, can the town support that? Bringing that number of people on in the next four years without hurting our budget and without going back and saying, "You know what? This is going to work for us. We're going to have to shorten you up for them." I don't want to see that either. So I guess my question is, and that's the comparison, the Quinn versus the SAFER grant, after four years, we own them. Can our budget support it? We are doing well at 1.1% of the tax base. We're not at 2.5%. Well, we have to go to the 2.5%. Will it cost us, the town, more to be able to do that? So I guess, as much as I want it, I got to be careful of it. So I want to just be sure I asked that question.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, sorry.
I was going to let Mr. Kasnovich just address some of the financial questions, but if you want to add something now?
Yeah, just, so, you know, and just to be clear, the Quinn bill was, it was an educational incentive that provided police officers reimbursement, or the town reimbursement, for their education. This is, this is not the Quinn bill. This is a, it's something completely separate.
And like I say, it was the apples and oranges. I was trying to make the comparison.
Yeah. The staffing grant is, if we are awarded the grant, the funding is, first off, there's only that commitment of three years. But if we're awarded the grant, we're guaranteed that three-year commitment. So we sort of, we know what we're walking into. We know that this isn't going to be funded, you know, beyond, beyond that point. But there's no fear in, we accept the grant, and then in year two, they say, "We're not paying." It would be a three-year commitment. I'll turn it over to Ms. Kasnovich.
So as a matter of fact, we had extensive discussions today regarding the finances of this grant. And certainly, from my perspective, and town administrators on the whole, their perspective is, this is something that, if applied for and accepted, we have to make a three-year commitment to fund at least our share of this project. But more importantly, as we discussed earlier today, we can't rely on the federal dollars to fund this over a three-year period and then absorb 100% of that hit in year four. So we would have to earmark a portion of revenue every year and build it into the budget, even though it's not going for direct salaries as an offset to these additional hires. We have to build in, into the budget. So we build that reserve up over a four-year period in time. Once we build into the budget, and it may go into a stabilization account or a reserve account, we can't use those reserve dollars to fund future year salaries, but it becomes part of an annual appropriation. So we're not picking up that full nut in year four. So yes, it is going to take a commitment. It may require, not knowing what the resources are going to be in years two, three, and four, we have to be prepared to potentially have limited growth to live within the resources that we have. I can't look at a crystal ball. We've been fortunate in the past several years. We've had new growth above and beyond what we estimated. State receipts have been very generous to the town of Auburn. Whether that's going to continue in future years, we don't know. But that's something where we would have to be prepared to deal with if a decision is made to go forward with this plan.
Mr. Holstrom, then, Mr. Berthin.
Okay, I guess, just as a follow-up, if we can't absorb all that in the fourth year, you want to build in some sort of reserve into that budget, but there would have to be some understanding in that budget that there wouldn't be any, if we're not using it, we're not going to use it, and transfer it on to the following year. We can't say, "You know what? I've got to buy, you know, a roll of hose. We're going to do something. I've got that extra money in reserve." We want the manpower. And if you want the manpower, then we have to make sure we maintain that reserve for only the manpower, so we can absorb that down the road without hurting the taxpayers providing the services that they require.
So we're going to have to provide for an annual appropriation as an offset to that 75, 75, 35. So when year four comes, we're not picking up the full 100% because we wouldn't have the capacity to do it at that time. So maybe it's an opportunity to say, "We're willing to make a commitment. We are going to tie up a portion of tax levy or general fund revenues that may go into stabilization," which is a benefit to the town, "but it allows for a level of funding that can be, can be diverted from stabilization back into the fire department when that time comes."
I'm in full support of that. And I think from just the discussion with the chief tonight about manpower, where I came from years ago to where we are today, yeah, the services are required. You are busy, and you need to have that man behind you. And right now, sometimes you haven't got it. And the call members are shortening up, just as you explained tonight. So, yeah, I am full support of this, but I want to be sure that the taxpayers aren't just, you know, boom, here it is for you. We want to be sure that there is some plan in place to.
So I think the action that you're being asked to take tonight does not commit you to funding that. It just allows them to apply for the grant. Let's see how the federal government reviews our application, because it helps the chief out, too, to determine the weaknesses and deficiencies within the department based upon that application. So there is a benefit by applying for that, but it would have to come back to you. And we could have a discussion about the financial impact if, in fact, there is a consideration for approval by the federal government.
Awesome.
Mr. Berthin.
I'm in full support of going for this grant. I do have a quick question. Now, we're getting closer to the Auburn Mall, to the Fallon facility there. You know, we get several calls a day to Fallon now over on Milbury Street. They're quadrupling their size. Are we going to see a lot more activity, do you think, from that? Just as a means of the fact that we do need more support on that, the fire staffing. And also, I'll let you answer that question about Fallon, but also as far as if we, if we didn't have 10, or we didn't have two people at, you know, left behind if there's an ambulance call from West Street, we always need to keep in mind that if something happens, we have to have callbacks. We still have expenses there as a town. We have to call firefighters in, which sometimes, you know, can be pretty expensive. So it's not, this is why I'm in favor of as much full-time staffing as possible, because basically, we have the people there that we need. If we don't have the people there that we need, we have to get people there. We do a lot of mutual aid to other towns. I'm on Paxton. Paxton does a lot of mutual aid to other towns. You know, how many times I hear up there that, you know, we're primarily a call department up there, and we have great men up there as well. But, you know, we're not, those trucks aren't necessarily leaving multiple trucks within, you know, a matter of seconds or a minute or two. You know, the first truck usually is leaving. Auburn has the benefit, and we've, you know, enjoyed the benefit of these, these great response times, but it's just an incredible, incredible endeavor for, for everything we have going here in town when you have six, seven, eight people on staff. So if you feel you need 10, and we can get some grants to get there, then I think we should definitely go for it, and I'm definitely in favor of the staffing. I would like to hear what you, what you have to say, though, what your projected increase is going to be with that new building.
Absolutely, Mr. Berthin. Through the chair, I just want to address mutual aid, because this is something that's brought up a lot. Finance Committee has talked to us about it in the past, about mutual aid. I'm often asked about how much mutual aid we provide. We had this conversation today. Captain Brigham, who's the lead author on this grant, myself and the deputy met with town administration today, and this topic came up about mutual aid, and it was, you know, the captain that mentioned it. Mutual aid has become a part of our daily operation. There is no way that we could function and operate on a daily basis the way we do without our mutual aid partners coming into the town of Auburn. And there is no way that our surrounding partners could operate and function without us. And there may be this perception that we do more mutual aid, but at the end of the day, in 2017, we responded out of town for 127 mutual aid responses. And that's out of a total of over 3,600 emergency calls. We went out of town mutual aid 127 times. We received mutual aid 125. So within two calls, it's pretty much, it's an even swap. And in conversations with, you know, chiefs in other communities, it's about the same. Although it may seem, or be perceived, that we're going out of town and providing a lot of mutual aid, we are receiving essentially the same amount of mutual aid. We had mutual aid ambulances in town, I think, twice on two separate occasions today, because we had back-to-back calls, we didn't have resources to provide, and we had mutual aid ambulances in the community. It's something that we can't live without. Our operation would not be able to function without our mutual aid partners. So I want to address the, you know, you had said, Mr. Berthin, you think you need 10. I want to just talk a little bit about how I, how I got there. That's not an arbitrary number that, you know, just pulled out of our head. Again, at the end of the day, we have two staffed fire stations. And I've, you know, I've said this, you know, publicly in the past, if a community is going to make a commitment to have a staffed fire station, or, you know, or have two fire stations, let me back up, a staffed fire station, we have to staff it, and we have to staff it appropriately. And I think the community has spoken loud and clear over the years about the passion that they have for the West Street Fire Station. It's a critical, you know, when we look at our district responses, they're not far off from a 50-50 split. It's, you know, 50, you know, 53, you know, 70, 47, you know, in terms of, so they're pretty evenly distributed on the calls out in West End. That's only going to grow as development continues to happen in the West End of town. And we have several projects before that are at least in the very beginning stages. You know, one of them is a, is a potential 300-house development out in the West End. We have some other commercial endeavors out there. So the West End is going to continue to grow, which is, which is going to really further define the need for that station. Trucks themselves do not respond to emergencies. Firefighters on trucks respond to emergencies. So I want to provide the best service that we can to the community and not the illusion of the best service that we can provide. So if, if we're going to have a staffed fire station, then I want to make sure that we're at least working towards, you know, staffing it appropriately where we can, we can get the trucks out the door. Based on our current model with two staff stations, that would allow four firefighters to be in the West End, covering an ambulance and an engine with two firefighters on it, which, again, is still not ideal. NFPA 17 recommends four firefighters. That's ideal. I'd be thrilled with three, you know, consistently. But four firefighters in the West End would at least allow those two vehicles to move at a minimum with the two people on it. And then back at headquarters, there would be six. That would be three on the engine, two on an ambulance, and then a supervisor, a staff supervisor in a vehicle. But again, even if we have the 10, with vacation time, sick time, we're still going to be working down to our minimum of seven. So the goal of raising the minimum from six to seven, even if we have 10 on a shift on a good day, there is a three-member buffer for time off, that our minimum is still going to be seven. Our call volume has really driven us to where, again, to where we are today. Over the past 10 years, we've had an 18% increase in our call volume. It's roughly about 2% a year. It was a little higher last year. It was 2.5%. And if the data shows us anything, I have no reason to believe that that's going to slow down, but only increase. Again, getting back to your original question about the Reliant. Right now on Milbury Street, with what they have for a facility with Reliant, we don't do 100% of the ambulance calls out of there, thank God, because we couldn't, we couldn't do 100% of the ambulance calls. So they do contract with private ambulance providers to do much of the lower-level, non-emergency stuff, but the state requires that anything that is a true emergency, they are required by state law to dial 911, and we would respond. And we, we do a lot of ambulance calls out of that location. When they move into their new location at the mall, they're going to also be moving other facilities that they have from Worcester to this location. I've heard early estimations that they're expecting foot traffic in that Reliant on a daily basis to be anywhere between 2,500 and 3,000 people a day going through that facility. So do I anticipate that there is going to be the potential for additional medical responses out of there? I do. I've run preliminary numbers. They're not earth-shattering, but do I anticipate that we're going to have a certain percentage increase in call volume when the two Penrose properties open? I do. Will we have increased call volume if this 300-unit apartment complex in the West End goes? Significant. So, again, I have no reason to believe that our call volume is not going to continue on the trend that we're doing, and you've heard me say this before. You know, outside the city of Worcester, we are the busiest fire rescue agency in Southern Worcester County. We are fifth busiest overall in Worcester County. We are a busy fire rescue agency, and we're running the same, the same number of shift staffing today that we were 13 years ago. Even with that increase, that 18% call volume over 10 years, our total complement of firefighters per shift, including the number of firefighters, and our, our number of firefighters hasn't changed in 13 years. Our minimum hasn't changed in 17 years. So the 10 firefighters is not an arbitrary number. It's designed to specifically staff the vehicles that are responding, on average, 10 to 12 times a day, handling over 3,600 emergency calls in the community. So that's how that number was derived.
Thank you, Chief.
If I may, to answer a couple of your questions, too, I think this might help give a level of comfort to the board. I know the item says that we're seeking a vote to authorize the application. I know the item says that we're seeking a vote to authorize the application acceptance and expenditure of funds, because that's what we do on standard grants. Our recommendation was actually going to be for you to vote just to allow us to authorize the application. We can continue the discussion if we get the grant. Quite honestly, we don't want to put all this work into it, and I say we, Captain Brigham is doing an outstanding job, he's at 63% on the application.
It could be higher.
True fact. It could have moved up.
It could be higher.
A little, but there are benchmarks that have to be met, and he's been working really hard on it. The bottom line is, should there be something catastrophic, let's say we get the grant, three years down the road, something catastrophic happens to the budget, which we don't anticipate, we're in a five-year, every year, five years out, we believe that we'll be able to support this. If for any reason, we needed to have massive layoffs, there's nothing preventing us from having massive layoffs. We don't want to do that, but we can. This does not commit us to keeping after the three-year period. But I think what we'd like to ask the board is to just allow us to go forward with the application. If we are awarded the grant, we can come back to you for further conversation about whether to accept it or not. We hope at that point that you accept it. If for any reason, we find something, or you all have a concern that we're not able to answer for you, and we're available, not just tonight, but, you know, between now and the time we supposedly would hear, which would be probably in July, there's another step beyond that, too. Even once the funds are awarded in July, we still have to then go to the town meeting in the fall and amend our budget to address the questions that you have. It's not in the budget right now, because we don't know that we're getting it. So there's still several steps, several opportunities for the board to have input and make a final decision. I think what we were hoping tonight is to be able to go forward and authorize the application, because it's due at the end of the month.
April 27.
April 27. So if that helps the board in their decision, because you may have additional questions, we didn't want to come with you, all of this information tonight and say, here it all is, make a decision tonight, we're in it or we're not. These are big decisions, but the authorization to go forward and have Captain Brigham get the remaining 37% of that done.
No pressure.
And I tease, but he's done a great job, and Deputy Chief Johnson has done a lot of the financial analysis on this, too. So there are a lot of people that are working on this, but we don't want you to feel pressured that you have to make this decision tonight, and we're grateful that you all support it. But at this point, I would just recommend that you vote to authorize the application, unless you truly feel you've had all your questions answered, and then you can vote the whole thing. But just allowing us to go forward should hopefully satisfy the board. And then, as the chief mentioned, and I think Ed mentioned it, too, we want feedback from the federal government. If we don't get this grant, why didn't we get it? Where are our shortfalls? What do we need to do for future grants and for other opportunities? So I think this just gives us a great opportunity that we've never had before to even apply for this.
I think Mr. Carpenter has one last question.
Yeah, I do have a question. First of all, I would support the recommendation to authorize the application, because I think, hearing about this on Friday, it's a little early for me to come to a conclusion, even though we talked about it, and I have full faith in what you're doing. So I certainly, it's more of a wanting to look at it a little further and have further conversations with you. But my concern, which on the face doesn't deal with this, is we're going through the process of looking at a new, potentially a new combined fire and police. So my biggest concern is, I don't want to be sitting here 20 years later and hearing what I'm hearing about the police station. So is this in the proposals that you've been working on as far as your RFP? Because, again, buildings cost an exorbitant amount of money, and it costs a lot of money when they're not done right. And we've certainly seen that with the police station. So I certainly don't want to sit here and have that problem a second time in my short time on the planet. So I would appreciate your commitment that this is going to be in there, and that wherever you put this building, I don't want to hear, like I heard 20 years ago, we can do it and we can't. And so that's my biggest concern, is if we're going forward, and it sounds like we probably do need a new building, and maybe we need two new buildings, I don't know, or we're going to get rid of one, and we're going to do something with the other. So can you discuss that with us? How you're going to take, if we're going to continue to see these increases, however meritorious they are, how are we going to accommodate that in a building that you're already kind of squeezed from 1965? How are we going to address that? And is it on the radar for the proposal that you're working on right now?
Through the chair, that's a great question. So we're hoping within the next couple of weeks, we're going to go out to bid with the RFQ. The RFQ is ready, we're in the last final review, looking to retain the engineering firm. Like any project, they will come in, they'll look at our current operation, staffing, and they'll make recommendations, like any building should, potential future growth over the next 50 years. I will tell you this, that if nothing were to be done to either of the stations today, the current staffing models of 10 on a shift, we have the ability to accommodate that staffing both at the West Street and headquarters with what that configuration is today. So when we recently did the renovation upstairs at headquarters, we built an extra room out for that. So even if nothing were to be done to our facilities, the current stations have the ability to hold the personnel that would be stationed at those buildings. Our major problems within the stations revolve around administrative space, training space, and more importantly, base space. You know, we have many vehicles and equipment that are outside, you know, the building was housed, or was constructed for vehicles that are half the size of the vehicles that are in there today, and those are just, and we buy, and, you know, you, again, Mr. Holstrom, we buy smaller vehicles than most of the communities have. Our Engine 3, we typically buy city model trucks, where if you were to put our Engine 3, which is our lead engine, next to an engine from the town of Milbury or the town of Charlton, our vehicle looks like a tanker truck compared to theirs. So we buy, we buy a different type of fire truck, which is a smaller version anyway. But our big issue in the station doesn't necessarily revolve around the space for people, it's the adequate space for administration and equipment. But if we were to have 10 a shift today, both stations are able to accommodate the six at headquarters, four at West Street.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else?
I'll make a motion to re-authorize the application.
I'll second it.
And acceptance and expenditure of funds for the safer grant.
So you're doing the entire thing?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And through the chair, if we do hear from the federal government that we are successful, we will bring this back to have further discussion with the board, so you will have another opportunity, you know, to vote yea or nay on whatever proposal we put before you.
Great. Thank you for being here, all three of you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Deputy. Thank you, Captain.
We are in the home stretch here. We have tabled items. The first three are the draft code of conduct, the revision to the recognition policy, and the proclamation policy. I don't believe you guys have posted or mapped, so that'll be continued. I do have a question on the proposed plastic bag ban. Is it on the website that we're still accepting input in on that?
Through the chair, it had been posted to social media, and once it was on social media, it was reminded again. We can put another reminder on it. It's still under Town News, that doesn't get removed until it gets dropped down, but we're happy to just double-check. I haven't checked that today.
Okay. And we are going to go back to, because that is, it appears, for tabled items, go back to the gift acceptance, to DDIS, we have from Nancy Potridge, $50 for donation towards the Animals House at the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound. We have from Carol Andrews, $10 in goods of dog food, laundry detergent, bleach, and dish soap, for supplies for the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound. From Carol Boyd, $25 for dog food, laundry detergent, bleach, and dish soap, for supplies for the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound. And Portia Shanet, a $40 gift card to Petco for supplies for the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound. And John Lake of Tatnic Pet Store, who donated dog food for supplies for the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound. And Richard Pettit for small breed dog food, laundry detergent, and dish soap and paper towels for supplies for the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound. Is there a motion?
Motion accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or voted? The next item we have is for the Fire Rescue Department. The first is for Edward and Eleanor Olson, in memory of Richard Weagle, in the amount of $50 for the Fire Department gift account. And also from Mastamans, in the amount of $200 for the Fire Department gift account. Is there a motion?
Motion accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? We have no board member items. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we have the minutes of February 26, 2018. Are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, the chair will accept them as written. And is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go in executive session in accordance with Master General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3, to deliberate upon matters which, if done in an open meeting, may have detrimental effect on the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to litigation, to come out of executive session only to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. The chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body relative to litigation, and that the board will not convene and reconvene an open session, and will come out of executive session only to adjourn. So we are headed to executive session.